Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the role, please.
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Present.
Merrenga.
Here.
Nordhook.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truce.
Present.
Vanderwall.
Present.
And Mayor Moss.
Here. Well, in the absence of a pastor, we, uh, the invocation tonight will be given by Councilmember J.R. Vanderwall. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for that invocation. And we're going to follow that with a pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear God, we're so gracious that we're here today. We're here together. We're here in peace and we're here in freedom. And we're grateful for that sunshine outside and we're grateful for spring and what that brings for us. Thankful that we get to be here tonight and gather and hopefully make great decisions. We're mindful of the presence of all those in here that serve this city, serve our community, public safety, public works, all the, all the beautiful people in this city and in this beautiful city. Give us wisdom and grace tonight. Give us strength and guidance as we go through our agenda and as we move into our budget session as well. We're thankful for everybody in this room and grateful for those that have died to serve for this country. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
JR, thank you very much.
Appreciate that. First of all, tonight, I would like to welcome David Calden from Varnum Law Firm, who will be filling in for Matt. He is not Matt Zimmerman. We all wish he were, but anyway, thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Merrenga, dear.
Thank you.
You have before you an amended agenda, adding one item, and that is Chief Anglin will be talking about staffing issues in the presentation toward the beginning of the meeting. So is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So move.
Part.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Now, opposition, please say no. We also have the minutes from our last meeting, March 13. Is there motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
Support.
Support. Any additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to point out? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the March 13 meeting, please say yes. Yes. Any opposition, please say no. Great. Presentation of bills. Dennis, anything you'd like to point out before we open it up for questions?
Not this evening.
Okay, we have bills in the amount of $318,000 approximately. Is there motion to approve? Well, let's, let's open it up for questions. Any questions on the bills? Dennis or Dennis? If not, is there motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $318,616.74?
So move.
Part.
Support. Comments? Final questions? No. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Merrenga.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. Chief, time for a presentation. Thank you for getting it ready on, on pretty short notice. I know that's a, an important topic for you and for us, so thank you for pulling it all together very, very quickly.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to present this tonight. After the council meeting two weeks ago, City Manager Durham asked me to put something together and talk about our staffing issues. That's going to be combined also with the presentation of a police corporal position that was previously scheduled to be presented tonight. On this first slide, that photograph was taken in 2020, just a few short years ago. Out of that, since that time, two of those individuals retired and were thankful for their service. Two left to work in the private sector, one left to take a job with the City of Grand Rapids Police Department, and one sadly was terminated during the probationary period. So in the next few minutes, we're just going to walk through how we got to the position that we are in today, the steps that we've already taken to try and address some of the staffing issues that not only the Granville Police Department is taking or experiencing, but actually what we're experiencing on a nationwide level. We're going to look at a couple of comparable agencies. When I say comparable agencies, I'm not talking contract negotiations because comparable cities for us in contracts are similar size in population. Okay, there is none similar city to Granville in the state with close 17,000 people because they're not metro areas and they don't have a large regional mall. And when we're looking at our recruiting, our comparables are Wyoming, Walker, East Grand Rapids, Kentwood, and Wyoming. Historically, we were at 28 sworn police officers and our sworn staff does include myself, the deputy chief, all of our detectives and patrol officers and sergeants. In 2009, we dropped down to 24. We do seriously appreciate the efforts that the council has made in the last several years to start bringing us back to our 2008 staffing levels. But if we just think about what's changed in the City of Granville since 2008, okay, we've added Bucktown Center, we've added the Grand Castle, we're adding apartment complexes where high-density population centers, just because of the nature, apartments aren't bad, but just because of the dense population, crime does go up. It's generally your larceny from vehicles, that kind of stuff. But if we look at part one crimes or the more serious crimes, 2008 to now, we've had a 20% increase in criminal sexual conducts, first through fourth degree, armed robberies, armed and unarmed robberies, we've had an increase of about 86%. Assaults, 36% increase and 100% increase in weapons offenses. So overall, call volume has only gone up about 5% from 2008. We're still a little bit depressed coming out of COVID, call volume wise, but we're handling a 5% increase of calls with close to a 4% reduction in staffing from what we had in 2008. The crimes that we're responding to now are a lot more violent. They are a lot more complicated, involving computers. So on the backend of the investigations, they're taking more time having to obtain search warrants for social media and that kind of stuff. So each one of our incidents is taking more and more time to investigate and doing our due diligence. Since 2013, we've hired 24 police officers. It sounds like a lot and lots. I would really love to go a year without hiring anybody because we're fully staffed. And we have had some failures in the system, but we've also had some really good hires out of that. Of the 12 that remain out of that, we have five that are currently working as day shift patrol officers, two are working as night shift patrol officers. We have one on a special assignment as a school resource officer, one is a detective, one's a sergeant, and that sergeant's currently on active military duty. Hopefully, we're going to be getting him back in October. We have one as an acting sergeant and our most recent hire is still in field training, doing very well. On the other half, the ones that we lost, five failed and resigned during field training. It's not an easy job to do, and I'll get into some of the specifics about that. And like I said, we lost five people during field training. If they resigned during field training, generally, they did that because they knew they weren't going past our standards. It's very demanding and we have chosen to work short versus settling the city with an employee for 20 to 30 years. That is going to be a liability. Besides those five, we had four leave for other agencies. Grand Rapids, this does count the officer that we're going to be losing in May to the Sheriff's Department. We had our one leave us during field training to go to Grand Haven Department of Public Safety, and I'm drawing a blank on the four, sorry about that. And a newer trend is we're starting to lose officers to the private sector. Just, there's a lot of different reasons for that that we'll get into in a minute too. Okay? How did we get here? It's a national issue and many things are playing into this. The national narrative, if you remember from the SWOT analysis in my annual report, our officers and civilian employees identified our biggest asset or biggest strength is the support we get from our elected officials, more importantly, the support we get from our citizens. However, the national narrative is still out there. We had some great support, the local business, MDK, no, MKD, sorry, brought in some breakfast for us on our block training days. One of the posts that got put up on that was, why don't you stop killing black people? Okay? And that kind of stuff, and that constant negative narrative does wear on especially some of our younger employees. We had job postings in 2020, some of the George Floyd riots. I'm sure that many of you will remember how when we had that post up on our Facebook page trying to hire an officer, how that just got doxxed. I mean, we were getting all kinds of very negative comments in on that. Luckily, our citizens, it took them about three days, but they came back and did the battle that we weren't allowed to and put a lot of those people in their place, but still it is a telling tale for us. There's increased liability personally, criminally, and we have to make decisions in a split second that attorneys, no offense, sir, get to sit back and judge in the confines of a nice warm chair in an office setting. In 2020, we all experienced the pandemic and, you know, police officers are used to running towards danger. Generally, we never had to worry about bringing that danger back to our homes, you know? We dealt with stuff on the street, we took off the uniform and we weren't a target anymore. In having to deal with the pandemic, our officers had to get used to the idea of, hey, my career choice might be endangering my family. So that's starting to add on people's thought process as well. Regionally, like I said, national narrative, a lot of individuals post pandemic wanted to work from home, they don't want to have set hours. Law enforcement's a 24/7 job, so that's starting to cut down on our applicants. There's much more of an awareness and it's really a good thing. Forty years ago, when I started and Frere Chief May started, you know, it was suck it up, no matter what you saw out on the street, you know, you gotta deal with it. We're a lot smarter and we deal with it through crisis intervention teams and that kind of stuff, critical incident stress teams, but there's more awareness of the physical, emotional costs that this profession brings on. One of the reasons why we have lost some of our individuals during field training is a social media thing, you know? Think about some of the kids that you know, and the only way that they can communicate is on a text. Oh, I'm sorry, you put on one of these uniforms, if you can't talk to people, you can't do the job, you know? And quite a few of the ones that washed out of our field training program, it was just due to the fact that they could not have a conversation with somebody, you know? So those skills are less and less, just like the military. There are less people out there that can physically do our job, you know? Physical standards are coming down. Think back to maybe some of your high school PE classes, you know, they're not making you do the rope climb anymore, physical testing, you know? So it is decreasing our hiring pool locally. We have two police academies here locally. Grand Valley State University runs a traditional 16-week full-time academy, and then Grand Rapids Community College runs two part-time academies, the day shift academy and night shift academy that are part-time, so an individual can keep a job and get trained for a new profession. That academy is currently running at 50%. Last year, I think we were at about 55%. We do have several instructors in there as well. There's much more of mobility now between agencies because retirement benefits are portable. With 401, as soon as you're vested, you can take that to any agency that you want. Another phenomenon that we are experiencing in our profession is more and more the law enforcement officers, not the primary breadwinner in the household, meaning that they can easily, more easily change to another profession. We like to refer to those individuals as hobby caps, but... And this liking can show you a difference of old school versus newer school. In the separations that we had, 2013 till now, those hired before 2013, retirement, retirement. Sadly, we lost Officer John Davis to terminal illness. We had one resign and a couple more retirements. For those hired after 2013, first three left for private sector, fourth one I know is actively looking for a private sector job. And right now, law enforcement officers are kind of a hot commodity in the private sector for school security and similar type, type, private jobs. Failed field training, resigned during field training, left to go to GRPD, terminated during probationary year, resigned, resigned, resigned. The individual that's in background with the Sheriff's Department has passed all of their conditional employment requirements and they are going to be leaving us in the middle of May. And the last one that left us, left to go to his hometown, Grand Haven Public Safety, is a little bit of generational, not having the loyalty to the employers. I think that's even impacting some of our private sector people. It's not that we haven't done anything or that we're just getting into attacking this issue at the 11th hour. We were one of the first agencies in Kent County to offer a lateral hire program. It was pretty good. If you had three years full-time experience, once you cleared our field training program, we would bump you up to our third gear pay scale. Right now, that is one of the lower options offered. Our officer that's going to the county had two years with us by time he goes, two years with Kent County, and they're bringing him in at the fourth gear pay scale. He didn't qualify for lateral for us because he had less than three years. Other things that we're doing to try and attract new academy grads or academy students, we've been sending recruiting teams out to the various academies. We try to keep it local. Majority of our employees come from our two local academies, but we do extend that a little bit. We've been up to Ferris, KVCC, obviously Grand Valley and Grand Rapids Community College. We started the cadet program last summer and again, would really like to thank you for that. And we are in the background process for our summer cadets and we really hope that that's going to provide us with a lot of candidates in the near future. And we also stress that for a small agency, and actually, we're not a small agency because the majority of law enforcement agencies in the country have 10 or less employees, but in the Grand Rapids metro area, we are a small agency. We do offer quite, quite a bit of opportunities for professional enhancement and career growth. This is a time that I haven't seen in my 40 years of doing law enforcement. We are now competing very hard against everybody else for employees, but we're also doing a lot of cooperative efforts. And one of the biggest ones that came out recently is this video. Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police partnered with several agencies to produce this recruiting video because we need to get high-quality applicants and not just us, all throughout law enforcement.
This is one of the greatest professions that a young person can consider.
You know, you have police officers and firefighters and you see them and you know that they help people and that's something that I wanted to highlight.
If somebody takes off, we gotta be able to run. Somebody wants to fight, we gotta be strong.
And I want somebody that's empathetic, competent, courageous, understanding.
But the very thing about this job, this career is the people that you work with will be your biggest help.
You are learning something every single day, keeps you on your toes, keeps you smart.
You never know from one day to the next what your next challenge is going to be.
What I enjoy the most is helping people when they're in need.
If you respect others, they will respect you back. That just makes your job a lot easier.
It's a tough and difficult job, even though it's fun, you have a great time. This is one of the most challenging careers.
I want to be that guy one day because I think the world needs more people like that.
If there's a change needs to happen, I'm going to be part of it and I'm going to make sure that it's positive.
They bring it up to my family all the time, like I sound like a police officer and they say it so proudly.
I can truly say that if tomorrow was my last day as a police officer and, and I couldn't do this anymore, I would not have gone back and done anything different. It's the most fulfilling, satisfying thing I've done besides being a father and a husband. And I laughed and I cried and I wouldn't change a thing.
So there's really no off switch, so if you choose to have this career, it's, it's a commitment and they have to understand that it's not just a job where you go to get paid, it's, it's a life.
And we were able to customize this video for ours for the agencies that didn't pay the $100, $150 for the customization. The last visual directs you to MACP's job posting site and we always post all of our openings on that, so if they don't see ours, there's a good chance that they are still going to be directed through our openings. Like I said, when we're trying to recruit, our comparables are really the Grand Rapids metro areas. This series of slides are going to show our top end pay versus all the other agencies, with the exception of East Grand Rapids because they do both police and fire and that's really not comparing apples to oranges. And this is for the 2023 pay scale, so this is what our officers will be at starting July 1. We are currently $6,700 below the average of those six agencies and $8,100 below the average of just the top five agencies. You know, a lot of people say, hey, Granville's a lot better than Grand Rapids in the right. It is a lot better working environment, but when you compare us against all the suburban cities, we were the first on scene of Wyoming's homicide on Indian Mounds. We were the first on scene for the shooting that occurred down by Century Park. We have been first on scene for Wyoming multiple times on their shootings and stabbings because it is a very cooperative environment here in Kent County. We are very thankful for that. But when a kid is looking at prospective employers, you know, yeah, 90 grand to work down in the inner city of Grand Rapids might not be worth it, but if you look at the Walker and Wyoming pay scale, that's a pretty similar environment to what we have. What some of the other agencies have done to recruit, they have sponsored people through the academies before the grant came out. We do really appreciate you guys approving us for our current open spot to send them through the academy. We are currently in interviews for that. Several places are offering signing bonuses. They can be a wide range. The two that I put down here, Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety for a fully cross-trained, that's police, fire, medic, that's $15,000 payable upon the completion of your first year. Fenton just got sent to me by a relative that lives over there, kind of a similar-sized city, they have, I think, $14,000 and they're offering a $5,000 signing bonus for people that make it through the first year. Doing laterals at year for year, little things, onsite workout facilities for retention and recruitment. There is a local agency that has a bounty on bringing in licensed law enforcement officers into their agency. If I was working for that agency and I recruited, let's say, Renee over there, as soon as she got through FTO, I'd get $750 as a hindrance fee. Some jurisdictions have done out-of-contract pay raises, being the City of Kentwood and the Ottawa County Sheriff's Department are the two that I'm aware of. Kentwood's was 5% Ottawa, I think was just a straight dollar amount, but I'm drawing a blank on exactly what that was. Grand Rapids, to help get them up to where they are, they introduced a senior officer pay step. Okay, you'll note that I put that in quotes because senior officer to them is different than senior officer to us, and we'll get into that when we talk about corporals here in a minute. That's basically a tenure pay step. It helps with longevity in their mind because it gives the guys some place for the next step to look to, to make. Our officers currently top out in four years. Relax grooming standards, I know you guys have seen some of our guys in birds, you know, that was one of the things that we did to help retain our individuals because, believe it or not, that means a lot to a lot of people. Pensions, believe it or not, some places such as Celine, Riverview, Livonia, St. Joseph Township, Deer Barn, Deer Barn Heights, Wyandotte, Trenton, have gone back to a defined benefit pension system. I know there are a couple other ones that are looking as well. There's some, you know, one-offs, some places, after you've been there for five years, allow you to convert a certain amount of your sick time to vacation and be able to take that as pay as well. Vacation to pay, some of the stuff we do. Environment like ours, even the individual that's leaving us for Kent County, he knows he's not going to have the same work environment, but for him, the security of a pension and $5 an hour raise right from the start were enough to tip him over. And obviously, some places have funded these through dedicated public safety milages. Some of the ideas that we'd like to look at, and we are already doing some sponsoring people through the academy, we've already increased our presence. We'd like to get our starting and top end pay closer to the average for, for the Kent County area. Like to consider changing our lateral hire program to go year for year. Signing bonus, I don't know if that, you know, it's out there, some people talk about it. Retention, I think adding another step or a senior officer pay step might, might help. Another big one that's come up in the past for us is not being able to work out either onsite or through a sponsored facility, reinstate pension system and at least if not that, keep the retirement medical the way it is. Last time in negotiations, that, that was, we very sought at, sought for give up by the union for the city, that didn't end up happening. So that's that part. I'll hit corporals and I'll take questions right at the end. The implementation of a police corporal position. We agreed to work with the rank and file union to develop this position at our last contract negotiation, which was closed out about a year ago. Believe it or not, we've had some personal issues, so I haven't been able to spin this up sooner than this, but it is very important. Reason why we need this, okay, our department only has four sergeants and then the patrol function. We cannot cover 24/7 on the street with a trained supervisor. It leaves about 22, 23% of the time where we are relying on a senior officer to serve in the role of a supervisor, okay? And that's really asking a lot of that individual because to qualify for a senior officer, you have to have four years on with the Granville Police Department, okay? This next slide, and this isn't even the most recent finding out of Memphis, but when I just put in police liability, looking for the highlighted verbiage there because that's in every law enforcement lawsuit, they try to establish the existence of a policy of inadequate training or supervision, okay? We are seeing way too frequently law enforcement incidents that go bad and a lot of that can be traced back to improper supervision on the street. The Tiger Nichols one that happened in Memphis just a short time ago, you know, I'm not going to get, get into all the details, most of you are pretty familiar with that, but you know, we have to have appropriate supervision out on the street and we have to give the people that are in that position the appropriate training, okay? Without that, we are just leaving ourselves open for a lot of liability. And this isn't the first step that we've taken towards this. When I first got here back in 2012, to be a senior officer, all you had to be was off probation and be the senior person on that shift. In 2014, we had a really unique occurrence. We had a, the senior officer had 13, 14 months on, had just a little had just a little over maybe two years as a cap total. And they were in charge on their shift, which included two other, uh, police officers that were still on probation, but both of those officers came to us with five years of experience from another agency. But yet, by our policy and procedure, the kid that was just barely off probation with two years would be handling an active shooter at the mall, active shooter, um, while they were on nights, so it wouldn't have been a skull shooting, but something like that. Um, so that really wasn't fair to that individual. We worked with the unions and in two thousand and seventeen, we got it to, you had to at least have four years on. Um, the reason why we came up with that, that timeline, is that four years, we allow individuals to test for supervisory position with our agency, okay? There's no other, um, specific training that we were able to provide, just because we couldn't tell who, what, who, uh, would be serving that role and to provide that training was, uh, cost prohibitive and manpower prohibitive. In the latest contract negotiations, we, uh, came to the agreement that the corporal position would be the way to go for our agency. And, uh, the difference between a senior officer and a corporal, a senior officer has four years minimal, uh, police experience with our city, same for the corporal. But to, uh, be selected as a corporal, you have to pass a written examination, go through an oral board, and there is contractually a consideration for seniority. Another issue that we ran into with the, uh, current senior officer program is, it wasn't voluntary. If you were the senior officer, you were the senior officer. You know, I'm sure each and every one of you can think about your work lives and there are some people that are great troops and they do a great job, but you put them in that supervisory role, they don't want it and they do anything they can to avoid it, okay? So again, uh, this just helps, puts it, put us into a better position. Once the corporals would be selected, they go through police supervision training, incident command system at the three hundred level and agency-specific training, so they know how we expect them to respond to critical incidents. What would a corporal do? Majority of the time, they're gonna be out there just, uh, humping calls, uh, responding to calls for service, just like any other patrol officer, but in the absence of a sergeant, then we have a trained supervisor. All the, uh, written reports get reviewed on a timely manner and, um, we have the on-scene supervision. Going to this system, we are going to, uh, at least until we get, uh, up to fully staff, our, uh, patrol deployment would be a little different, be a sergeant, a corporal, and two officers on each one of our four basic shifts. That would allow us to have a minimum staffing of three officers on at any given time. If you remember the, uh, neighborhood that came in, we were complaining about the car larcenies that happened between three AM and six AM, we're, right now, we go down to two officers during that time. Uh, when the added pluses to this pro, program is, it's gonna allow us to maintain a minimum of three officers on the entire time. The cost analysis, um, for the, uh, promotion of four officers to corporal, it's gonna be about twenty-seven thousand dollars for, uh, the first year, that includes both wages and benefits. We did put money into this current, uh, fiscal year in our wages, because we knew that it had been agreed upon and we were working towards the implementation of it. Uh, we would save, uh, currently five thousand just in wages, because when a patrol officer serves in the senior officer, uh, function right now, they get paid additional two dollars and fifty cents an hour, so, uh, that's where that five thousand comes to. So, uh, estimated first year cost is twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh, and doing some research for this, one of the articles I found, uh, Michigan City's police settlements range from thirty-four hundred dollars to eighteen million dollars. Uh, our guys are good, but even if you do everything right, you can end up in a lawsuit. So, it, it, twenty-two thousand is a substantial number. However, when you look in the big scheme of things, um, it, it really is not that much to provide almost a hundred percent, uh, coverage for, um, or a hundred percent supervisory coverage. Our proposed timeline for this, uh, hopefully you guys will approve the corporal part tonight. The first part of the presentation is gonna be a lot longer discussion, um, but hopefully we'll get approval to move forward with the corporals tonight. We'll post it tomorrow, posting will close on April twelfth, do the written exams on May eleventh, interview is on the twenty-fifth, promotional ceremony to be determined, and they would, uh, the new rank would take effect on June twenty-ninth, which might sound like a weird day, but that's the date of our next shift bid and it's just the easiest to implement, um, on one of those. And again, we did have, uh, funding in our wages, uh, line item to cover the, the promotions for the full year as well. Um, for the corporal position, I'd really like to take a, just a quick minute. I know this is going long and I apologize, but we had a wide range of people work on it. Uh, we had our union president, Officer Roger Balma, Officer Rich Brown, Officer Noah Ferentz, Detective Andrew Mizell, who is the grievance chairman for that union, uh, Acting Sergeant John Steffes, and Sergeant Darren Raitman. They all put a lot of time and effort into coming up with a, uh, letter of understanding, uh, that the union has already signed up on. So just to kind of summarize both presentations, our officers are expected to, uh, fill many roles. Uh, if you look at the two visuals up there, trust us, all of us would much prefer to, uh, be out in the parks playing with the kids, um, but when that alert tunnel goes, you know, we have to be ready to go and we have to provide our officers with the appropriate training and, uh, equipment, all that kind of good stuff to be able to do. Uh, crimes and critical incidents are not limited to, um, city limits. Uh, we ended up jumping, uh, Walker's last, uh, police officer involved shooting. Uh, that suspect was driving into our, our city. Our officers were the one that found him, kicked him across the river, picked him up on the other side and luckily, uh, we weren't involved in the final shootout with that one, uh, 'cause we chased him into, uh, Ottawa County's hands, but, um, this stuff can happen at any time. Uh, on behalf of all of our officers, I really like to, uh, express my gratitude for you guys listening tonight. Uh, that's the kind of stuff we would much prefer to do, but we are ready to do the rest. And I realize I went over, but I'll take any questions.
Yes, sir.
I wanna thank you for the presentation. What I really appreciate, uh, in my time on council is that, uh, you not only come and present us with issues or concerns, but you always have potential solutions and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Going back to the officer pay, um, you know, for the twenty-twenty-three contract year and where we sit, we really can't address that right until, uh, the union negotiations again?
We can always look at doing out-of-contract changes. We've, we do them periodically for minor things that might be, um, not as clear in the contract and we'll do those as letters of understanding, uh, but we can always ask to reopen the contract. We would prefer not to do that, because then it opens it up to everything. But I think if you were to, um, suggest to the union that we'd like to talk with them about an out-of-contract wage addition, they'd be more than happy to do that.
And, uh, if you decide not to do that, um, her contract, you know, is fourteen months left. At least, uh, let them know that it is a topic that definitely had your attention and possibly start, um, negotiations early or, you know, I'm sure that they would be, uh, very happy with that in, you know, for a stopgap measure.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. In addition to what Tim said, I always appreciate that you come with a lot of data and a lot of information, you know, to share, uh, and to kind of demonstrate, you know, the issue that you're, you're bringing to our attention. Um, a couple of questions, so, and you maybe, may have answered this before when we talked about corporals, so bear with me, but, um, with the corporal position, would that be part of the sergeant u, unit or the rank and file?
Rank and file. And that's why when, uh, we list out their duties, they do not do, uh, performance evaluations and they are not part of the disciplinary process. They would still be able to take a citizen's complaint, the initial, when somebody came in to complain about an officer, they would write it up and then that would, by our policy, go to the, uh, deputy chief. If a sergeant takes it, because it's a different union, sergeant would do the initial. If it looked like it was gonna be a serious one, then it would immediately get handed over to the deputy chief.
Okay. And then this, um, that, one of the last couple of slides there where you kind of showed the rearranged staffing arrangement, would that, is that with current workforce or is that with the additional FTO that we're gonna talk about later?
Um, that is current minus one. Uh, I have room to have one, if, if we were fully staffed and are authorized to twenty-seven. In addition to the four even squads, I would have a relief officer on one of the squads.
Okay.
Okay, um, by going up to twenty-eight, that allows us to have that relief position on both sides. Uh, the biggest, one of the biggest benefits of that is if I get a long-term, uh, light duty or long-term vacancy, then we're not experiencing all the burnout and because then automatically, if somebody takes some, some time off, you have to fill it with overtime. So, it gives us a little bit of Brady and Irwin, again, uh, there are just times where we, uh, you know, we run out of police officers, you guys will be, uh, reading about a couple of those in, you know, March summer, where we end up having to have, uh, assistance from, uh, neighboring jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Yeah, obviously, thanks chief for all this. Um, it sounds like there, it, the presentation, there was, it was twofold. One was the recruitment strategy, one was an internal issue, um, with creating a corporal position. Does the corporal position also present as a recruitment strategy for new hires? Just to note that there is an opportunity for this or, or are they unrelated?
It's kind of hard to say. For my generation, I, I would look at it as a plus, because that's an additional supervisory role. Um, with today's recruits, sometimes they really don't wanna climb the ladder, they just wanna come in and be, be a ground trip, you know? Um, so I, I honestly can't, can't answer that. I think it, it'll be attractive to some, but not to all.
Okay. I didn't know if this was part of the recruitment strategy. I mean, I think it's a great idea, but I, I didn't know if that was on your radar of putting, filling that funnel for recruitment. Okay, thanks.
Yes, Jeff. Kind of along the same lines, I guess I'm curious, i, if you're posting this tomorrow, is this posted, I'm assuming just internally or externally also?
No, just internally.
And you have, you have people in mind that are interested in these positions already or that?
Like you said, to, uh, come up with the, uh, letter of understanding, uh, that the union has, we, uh, worked with the, the union, um, to kind of, they were guided, but to develop the scope of work, um, and the compensation and all that. So, yeah, we're, we're pretty confident that we're gonna, gonna be able to fill all four positions internally.
Good. So the staff are excited about it, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Great. Chief. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the presentation. I mean, perfect timing, right? I mean, we're talking about the budget as well tonight on a whole bunch of different positions and items. Um, are you asking for specific approval tonight to implement the corporal plan and, uh, or is that something that you can do without a formal approval?
Because it is a new position, um, we'd like, uh, permission from the council to implement that. It was something that, uh, was, uh, come to, with, through the bargaining session, but just like with the recruit position, because it is a new job description, is why we wanted to present that to the council for approval.
Okay, so you're looking for a resolution to implement the corporal?
Yes, sir.
Program as described by you, just, okay, so that'd be? Item Dennis, should we take that up right now or move it down?
We would request that you take it up right now. Motion support, and if that does not happen and the council chooses to delay for one more meeting, we can bring that back on the agenda. And I think that the chief has, uh, through your support this evening, just in the discussion, can move forward with the process to start to fill that position and post it, but we can do the formal resolution at the next meeting if the council wishes to just take some time and think about it.
Counsel, what's your, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion with your parameters that you just said, so I don't have to repeat all that. Did you get that, um? Attorney?
It's not Marcy, it's not Marcy, because she's not writing.
I see Marcy writing it.
Okay, yeah. I will support that motion.
Motion.
Whatever it is, yes.
We know exactly, Marcy knows exactly what it is. Uh, any other discussion, comments? Sounds like a great program. Thank you, chief, for, again, for putting this all together very in short order. Any other questions, comments? Do you have a motion support? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstrom?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Galdarlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss?
Yes. Okay, time for public comment. Anybody here, uh, like to address the council? Just invite you to come up to the podium, give us your name, address, tell us what you're thinking about tonight. Anybody here? Come on up, welcome. So you're glad you came tonight, you learned like the rest of us too, you always learn something here.
Um, my name is Carol Perschbacher and I live at forty-three fifty-six Redstone Court, uh, here in Grandville. And thank you all for your service, I, you know, I really appreciate it. And as a concerned citizen, and I said to my husband, from now on, I'm gonna come to every single council meeting, 'cause we need to know what's going on in, in our city. Um, and the city is growing and if we don't have the police to, um, support that, we need to, we need to give them all the support we can. And I'll bring you donuts every week if I have to, you know? I, I mean, you know, we, we gotta, we gotta let them know that we care about them and that we, it's tough being a police officer. I wouldn't want my child out there, to be really honest with you, especially in this day and age. So, I commend each and every one and I think that we need to, with all the building, the new, like you said, the new apartments behind Target, the new addition going in off of, uh, Ivan Rask, we've got tons of hotels around here, well, who knows what goes on in those places? Um, we need, we need, we need support.
Thank you very much, thanks for the kind comments. Anybody else here? Sir, welcome.
It's actually related to the next agenda item.
Okay, we'll probably open that up for comments too, or, or you can make your comment now, it's on the alley.
Yes, alley.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, 'cause we're gonna have a public hearing on that, so, good, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment, not related to the, to the alley vacation issue? Okay, great, then it is, time for the public hearing. And I know at least one person who will speak on it. So, um, I don't know.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Yes, open, open that up, motion to open up the public hearing, is it supported?
Support.
Motion support. Your discussion, all those in favor of opening up the public hearing, please say yes.
Yes.
The opposite, please say no. Great, public hearing is open. Dennis, you wanna give us some background? I know we have for, Matt.
Matt.
See, I look over there, 'cause that's where I expected to be, Matt.
Well, we had requests from one of the residents, but this alley is described as a paper. On occasion, we do get these requests, uh, we do look at the alley. Are there utilities, is it still used as an alley or is it overgrown and not used at all? They answer that, if you like, you know, it's not used as an alley anymore, it's turned into lawns, um, fences and things like that. So, um, we went through the necessary process of posting this public hearing, um, for the alley vacation. How it works, you know, this splits to the north and south. When we vacate an alley, our properties get an extra feet split even. Down there, we have to answer questions that may happen.
Questions for Matt? Hey, sir, will, uh, take public comment now, welcome.
My name is Dan Driggs, I live at thirty-seven thirty-two Crystal. My property is built on a hill and there are, no, I forget what they're called, retaining walls to the back of my property and to one side of my property and a garage on the other one, so there is no good access to our backyard. And there are four, we found out, are Siberian elms that are just outside of our property line. They're kind of a nuisance tree, they tend to shed large limbs. We already lost one, no, maybe like two thousand and eighteen, that the city actually took down for us. So, my concern would be, A, we don't want the trees, they're kind of junk. And B, if everybody gets another eight feet, they build fences to the property line and something happens with those trees, we have no way to get those serviced. The, we had an arborist come look, um, he said it would cost around forty thousand dollars to get a crane from Vermont Street to take care of those trees. We can't do that. We can't do that. That's my objection.
Could you, would you do me a favor, and just look on this map, could you mark which one, it's one of the, one of these, yeah?
It's the second one. We are right here. That one.
Where's the trees?
Okay, all right.
Do I have that one?
Thank you.
It's this one right here. This one, right? Yes, yeah.
Right here?
Yeah, this one right here, the second one.
Second one from the left.
Oh, I did have one for both of you. We'd be very open to the city removing the trees, and we'd be happy to take the eight feet.
Okay, great. Anybody else like to address the council? Just come on up, give us your name, address.
Hello, good evening, council, my name is Deena Keel, I reside at 2940 Vermont Avenue Southwest, and I have the same concerns as my neighbor. I am proud to be their neighbor, and I am also the parent of an adult son with special needs. I moved back into Granville to be near family and my support system, I'm a single mother, and I'd recently just had a tree removed on my property. If we are given this property as, basically, I call it a gift from the city, the liability is the trees. Now, the trees do shed, the trees are a problem, and they continue to be, we have large limbs that are falling. We would like to have the liability mitigated from the property owner, if you're going to give the property to us, we would like those removed beforehand in order to mitigate any, any property loss, any issues, any concerns, and to offset the liability that would be taken by us when you offload your, the alley to us. So I'm asking that the trees be addressed beforehand, and then we will happily accept the gift of eight feet. So thank you very much, we appreciate all that you do for the service of our city, and I'm proud to be back here, and I'm proud to work also from home for Priority Health with Granville. And you guys have done nothing but just make me proud, I'm a graduate here, I'm happy to raise my family, and to have them work here as well, so thank you.
Great, thank you for your comments. Do you live in a house on the corner?
Corner, yep.
My house is on, so I can't see over there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It is.
Okay.
So I am here.
Yep, okay, good, thank you.
The little one.
Thanks. Anybody else like to address the council on this alley vacation matter? Okay, and if not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So, sure.
Discussion, discussion, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say yes.
Yes.
The opposition, please say no. Okay. I've got a question, maybe, I think it's a Matt question, maybe? How was, what prompted this vacation of the alley?
So, it's a survey.
Okay. I see there's an email in there, I'm not sure if that was, okay, okay.
Are these large trees right in the, in the alley itself, on the city property?
They are, it's been surveyed at least twice since I've been there, and yes, they're just outside of.
Yeah, I thought so.
Yeah, we're neighbors, he's in the big green house, I'm in the little gray house, and yes, they bought our property, and both of us would share that liability, and so we would just like to have it addressed.
Yeah, I looked down there, I mean, it looked like they were in the alley. Was it the city's obligation at some point to clear that, to keep that clear?
If the, if the trees are proven to be dangerous trees, we'd have an arborist look at it, and if they determine that they're dangerous and/or that they're dying, and they should be removed, then the city would be responsible for that. If we do turn over the alleyway, though, then it becomes the responsibility of the new homeowner.
Right, but right now, though, as, as it is, as a city alley, city property, is it right now our obligation, were we negligent in our, in not having it cleared or not?
No, we can send an arborist out tomorrow and have them do an inventory of all those trees, and find out what the condition is and how much it would cost.
Should it have been done already, is what I'm saying, or is this something that should, should, should that be something the city does, is clear out alleys that we own, clear out large vegetation, or not?
Well, we, I can only answer with my experience from December on, and I haven't looked at any trees yet, but in other previous lives, we usually have tree issues that come to us through a complaint system. So if a homeowner were to call in the city and say, I've got all these limbs falling on my house, and it's a city tree, then we would immediately go out and do that kind of an inventory and that health check.
So it's not a policy, then, to keep the alley clear at all, is what I'm hearing, right?
Alley is being used as an alley?
Right.
And the history is yes.
Yeah.
But this one, that's not been used.
Yeah, right, okay. Dan, do those trees go all the way down the alley, or are they just on the two properties?
Two properties, as far as I know, there's no others that are inside.
From the map, it looks like the request came from the far end of the alley to vacate that, as far as the addresses go. So the, the trees were in question that we're talking about, discussing tonight, are just on your two properties, or close to that?
I recently had a tree removed, and it was, it had joined my property, and that was at the cost of $2,300, and I'm a single parent, that's kind of costly, and that was just at the bare minimum, and that didn't include having the stump grinding. So I still have to have that done. But again, the other tree that's in the back has falling limbs, my son was back there, and one of the branches had fallen and nearly hit him. So my son's safety, he, as I said, he's an adult with special needs, he has autism, and so we have a safety space for him, so he can stem and use as he needs to. So the tree is being an issue of safety. So he no longer plays in that area of the yard, or the yard at all, he will only walk our dog, he will not take him anywhere.
Yeah, there's a saying that says, it goes something like, the cows have escaped the barn door. So we are going to investigate those two trees regardless of what the decision of the council is tonight to vacate, we're going to have to investigate that, and if they are proven to be dangerous, we'll have them removed, just as a matter of stewardship. Does that remove the issue from the consideration of the alleyway vacation, then?
Shouldn't they be removed even if they're not determined to be dangerous?
That's what I mean. Uh, no, if they're healthy trees, the city of Granville has a, has a practice of trying to preserve trees.
These are junk trees, aren't they?
The, the arborists call them either Siberian or Chinese elms, and they are notorious limb droppers, and their root system is very shallow, so they're prone to fall into a storm.
They're known as weed trees. That's what I was told by our arborist. We will happily replace them with other trees. Yeah. Our arborist would be better.
Well, we have the chairman, person of our board right back there, he will be happy to help you with that.
He's got a website.
Yeah. You know what, Randy?
Sorry. How many more alleys are we going to have to deal with potentially, because we've done some vacations before? Is this the last one, or do we, Matt, do we know?
There may be a handful left, but we've vacated most of the alleys that have not been used as alleys. It's all a handful that are actively used.
Some people get to their garages and stuff.
That's a good question, Randy, because you and I have been here a long time, and we've done a lot of, you know, a substantial number of alley vacations, and I think this is the first time I've ever heard this issue, almost like, are we trying to offload a problem? Usually, I mean, my experience in 26 years has been, oh, good, we get some more property. So this is a unique issue, I think, but Dennis's point is good, whether or not we do this alley vacation, we need to make sure that this
Take care of the trees.
Take care of the trees.
And I'm always, I always try to be conservative in terms of taking trees out, so that's why it's important. I think that an expert looks at them and says, this is what kind of tree it is, this is the danger that it is, and this is how it should be taken out. I'm with you, I think that we're going to get to the point from the citizens' testimony tonight, that we're just going to be removing those trees and then vacating the alleyway.
Chair.
Based on that, I'm going to make a motion to table this alley vacation until we get some answers from the city, and we don't burden residents with having to remove trees at an absorbent amount unless do our due diligence to look into this. I don't think, I don't think adding another eight feet of your property in the next 30 days is going to, is going to be a great thing for you.
I will second that, I agree, I think we need the information before we can make the final decision.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right, and I want to assure the residents here that you're going to find that we're all going to support vacation, you know, of that alley, you know, once we get satisfactory results and answers on the tree question, which we want to remove the trees, obviously, we don't want to burden you with that. I myself, I'm, I'm a near neighbor of yours, I live on 30th Street, on the corner of 30th and Sanford Street, and I was a beneficiary of this policy as well, I don't know, eight years ago, 10 years ago, I'm not even sure now, we vacated an alley, which was my driveway. So in most of these cases, yeah, so we, you know, was driving down there, obviously, I cleared veg, any vegetation that would have been in there, most of it was pavement. In my case, I had to go to my neighbors then, who had pools and fences and didn't want to move into their eight feet, so I had to end up taking the whole thing, because I, that alley was, anyway, that's neither here nor there. It's, it's definitely something we don't want to burden residents with, most residents have just sort of subsumed that anyway, you know, I was mowing over there, of course, and, you know, keeping it, but these, these type of trees are kind, you know, I have properties in, in the city of Grand Rapids too, and if you don't pull these things off by the, in the fence line, these junk trees, sorry, they, you know, they grow quickly, and you just, you got to maintain them, so that's, that's what I feel about them.
We've got a motion and support to table it. Any other comments, questions? Justin?
Yes, I guess I'm just wondering if we table this, and it comes back that the trees are healthy, are we feeling, then, that we oppose the vacation of the alley? Or are we saying we cut the trees down regardless of the policy, and if that's the way it's going to be, then why wouldn't we just make a motion to remove the trees right now? And, I mean, either way, it sounds like the trees are coming down. That's the message I got.
I guess I'd feel a little bit more comfortable knowing from an arborist, yeah, I mean, I, I understand, but then, then somebody else, and then maybe have kind of just a cost estimate too, just so we know, even though they're, it sounds like likely they're going to come down.
Mr. Mayor, one last thing, I don't mean to belabor this, but the process is important here too, because of public trees that are elsewhere in the community. And a property may just not like the tree that the city has in a right of way, and say that we want to cut down, and if we have a standard practice of always sending the arborist out first, it sets the precedent that we're going to not just cut down trees, we're going to make a very educated and informed decision on that tree. So I'm not, I'm not trying to make a big deal about it, but the process is important, I think.
And we're following it.
Yeah, I would agree.
I agree with that too, we're a tree city, we should follow process like that.
Okay.
I guess one more encouragement, Matt, would be to, you know, in the next 30, 60 days, is just maybe a memo to us of what alleys still exist, and we can drive around ourselves and check it out and see.
It's not always apparent.
What's that?
It's not always apparent if you ride by a neighborhood, it's an alley or not an alley, or, sometimes there's not, you know?
I mean, this is probably the third one we've done in a year, right, alley vacation?
Yes. Yes, in this last two years at least, yeah.
Motion support, any other discussion, comments? Not, to table? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truus.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Geldrelos.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes, so under ordinances and resolutions, that first item has been resolved for the evening at least. Next item is property purchase agreement for the property on 34th Street along Buck Creek. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, this item, the council has already authorized the purchase of the property, and we closed on that property this afternoon, so it is now under city ownership. However, the title company has requested that we take one more step and provide a resolution from the council approving this. So we're just giving you the resolution this evening to approve, and then we will send that off to the title company, and they'll have, they'll be satisfied with all the paperwork that they need.
Just got one comment, after speaking with our city attorney here tonight, David, and who also, I believe, talked to Randy Cracker, he's suggesting that the resolution that we have before us just gets tweaked ever so slightly, about two-thirds down in the one, two, three, four, fourth, whereas, paragraph that says, right now, whereas the city intends to use the real property to enhance park purposes, that we take out the words "to enhance park purposes," or "to enhance park," and put "for public purposes," because we're not sure what's going to happen to the, the home there, if that's actually going to be part of the park, so, but it all, it will be for public purpose, so I would suggest we make that little unadvice of council change. What would the resolution number for this be, Marcy?
3301.
Any questions for Dennis about this, or anyone else? Chair.
I'm a little curious about the purchase price, I thought we were at a different number.
Yes.
And did we come back to this number?
We had the inspection completed, and there were a couple major items, and we went back to the seller, and the seller agreed to reduce that purchase price to 285.
Okay, and so the 300 here is inaccurate.
That's the original purchase offer, and then there should also be the amendment.
Yeah, and I'm, under the title, the title commitment, it lists at 285.
Thank you, I didn't see the date at the top, it was the original, March 6th one, thank you.
Yeah, I missed that too, so, thank you.
Yeah, I think this is a great accusation, so, Scott? Let's see, do we have, no, we don't have, do we have a motion support? I don't think so. Is there a motion to adopt resolution number 3301, that slight amendment?
So move.
Motion and support, any other discussion, comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truus.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Geldrelos.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Thank you, Dennis, for your work on that project, a very short timeline, get that done, thank you.
A lot of help.
Next item is under the consent agenda, and we have a couple reports, the fire EMS report from February, as well as the investment report, and then also proposal to set the second budget work session for Monday, April 17, at 6:00 PM at the Clean Water Plant. Todd will be hosting this. Okay. So is there a motion to adopt, approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Marcy, would you call the roll on this one, please?
Councilmember Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Geldrelos.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truus.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Dennis, city manager's report.
Nothing more this evening, thank you.
Okay, time for council member comments, then? Randy, we'll start with you tonight.
Just a couple things, I want to thank all you folks from the city who came in and shared your thoughts with us regarding the alley and for support for the police department. I just want to say to the chief, thanks for, it's a lot of information, but you put it together in a good format, and I think you opened a lot of our eyes, and appreciate it.
Josh?
Oh, nothing tonight.
Okay, Justin?
I just echo what Randy said, thank you to the residents who spoke, and Chief Engle, something that I've always appreciated, as was stated here before, is that you look at things through a proactive lens, so, you know, a lot of the issues that arise in policing, I think, come from reactiveness, and not, not a lot of forethought sometimes, that is not true here in the state of Granville, so thank you to both of you for your leadership and all the officers. I did want to add to that, too, that I would be kind of interested if there's any exit interview data, or even data that's collected from current officers, where we could kind of take a look at some of these proposals. You have things like the lateral move contract language, you have the gym membership, things like that, if there's any data that shows, you know, these would be the things that really seem to be, obviously, pay is going to be, you know, the top one, but what are some of those other things that seem to stick out the most among officers that would give us the biggest, you know, bang for the buck if, if we were to implement some of those ideas? So anything that you could provide, that way, I think, would be really valuable. Thank you, that's all I have.
Yeah. I always appreciate the public comment, too, so thank you for coming, that's all.
Thank you, Chief Engle, for the report and for all the data you've given us a lot of, thank you.
to think about, I think we should end up, and hopefully that we do end up supporting most of your, if not all of your policy recommendations for recruitment and retention, it's an important issue. Thank you, Chief May, for the invitation to the awards ceremony, I'm sorry I was not able to attend, but very much appreciate being invited, that was very nice, and thank you.
It was a summary report, it's a night open.
Yep, I saw that, and I appreciate that, appreciate the inclusion of that very much, and congratulations to all of those awardees, and thanks again to all those who, who spoke tonight, appreciate you being here, and look forward to seeing you at every, every meeting now.
You can watch us on YouTube.
Yeah, just echo all those comments, I know at last meeting I said, can we get invitations to these awards, and I didn't show up, but thank you for the invitation, and obviously the notes afterwards, too, as well. You know, interestingly, I got an email today from Teresa, just thanking all of the, the local businesses and patrons that were involved in the expedition, and I think ironically, she called it one of the city's smaller events, and I think that's so funny, because it was such a huge event, and it covered so much space in Granville, and there were so many stops, there was a real alligator there, as we approved last time, not at our office, but there was, it was close by. Tremendous, tremendous success, there was 53 teams of people racing, everybody was so gracious, loved being a host, we raced, raced every year in the past, but being a host was so much fun, and getting to see all those people there, and Mayor Mas, I saw some photos of you at the after-party as well, were you holding the alligator there?
I was not holding it.
But kudos, Teresa, I know she says, there's so many people on this team that make this, made this happen, but you are the brains behind all this, and so thank you very much for this, it was a fun, fun, fun event, can't wait for the next one, thank you.
Yeah, to follow up on what JR said, Teresa, just a fabulous event, it was a lot of fun. I don't know whether Teresa's taking reservations for next year's tickets yet or not, but, I mean, every year, it's fabulous, and you think, how can it get any better, and it just seems to be, just, you hit it out of the park again, and again, and again, so thank you so much. Carol, thank you for being with us tonight, and neighbors, thank you, it shows that it makes a difference when you show up, so you're always welcome here. Second, fourth, Monday of every month, at 7:00, here we are, so, great, great to have company. So following this meeting, we're going to have our first budget workshop, so I'm suggesting if we, if we adjourn, then we meet, start over on our budget in like five minutes, we'll take a five-minute break, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Nobody wanted to lose. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes, any opposition, please say no.